Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM on September 24, 2025. Time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mr. Schultz will offer the invitation. Mr. Hawke will leave us in.
Please stand if you can. About to head. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, and the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens and the city of Washington Courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. Thank you for being there, and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for everything, and in your name, Lord, amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Kelly.
You'll be excused by understanding.
Blair.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Crispin.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from our first meeting of the month, on September 10, 2025. Any changes? Not that someone want to make a motion to approve?
I'll move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch. Yes. Any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have the report of service, safety, and recreation. Mr. Hawke.
The Service, Safety, and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, September 10, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Ted Hawke presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Crispin, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Gary Dean, service director; Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief; Mr. Mark Pitchstick, city attorney; and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, Chief Downing noted the fire department's involvement in multiple community events. Number two, the administration noted the police department's increased focus on traffic enforcement. Number three, the committee noted that the street department was preparing for the scarecrow festival. Number four, the committee noted that several service department employees had completed fire hydrant training and OUPS training sessions. Number five, Mr. Gary Dean advised the committee that multiple projects had been completed within the city, including brush chipping, mowing, and the construction of new barricades. Number six, the committee noted that the PUCO deadline had ended for gas service removals at residences. Number seven, the committee noted that facilities maintenance had completed painting of the pickleball courts at Eymon Park and would do the same at Gardner Park. Number eight, the administration noted new street and alley bids due to the gas service removals being completed. Number nine, the administration noted that a four-inch storm line repair had been completed at the Fayette County Museum. Number ten, the committee noted several projects being completed by the Water Distribution and Water Department within the city, including nine service setups, six catch basins rebuilt, valve program checks, and cleaning and degreasing of lift stations. Number eleven, the committee noted the electric facility opened house on November 1 regarding the proposed transmission line construction from the Atlanta substation north of the city. Number twelve, the committee noted that full deep repair work would begin on Market Street on October 1. Thirteen, the administration noted the abundance of brush chippings on hand. The committee recommended that options be reviewed. Number fourteen, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, appointing Mr. Rick Garrison to the Carnegie Public Library Board. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawke, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Discussion of that committee report. Someone want to make a motion to accept it?
I'll move that we accept those minutes as read.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Blair.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Lynch. Yes. Mr. Blair, do you want to make any comments about the downtown vitality task force?
No, sir. Everybody had a copy of it.
We did?
Yeah.
So, I've noticed Chelsea was talking about in our meeting that they put up some signs on buildings, and I think that's to tell people there's actually work being done there, and they're not just sitting, and I think that's, that was a good thing. Okay, thank you for that. Let's see, we are ready for our city officials. Mr. Denon, you're up to back.
Thank you. We talked about it in the committee report. Just a reminder, Mark and Clinton, you'll see that full-depth repair work, so that will be where we cut out all squares and triangles, and you do a whole lot deeper work to the pavement, and then, much like we've seen us do other streets in '26, you'll go over that with, oh, you'll grind it down, and you'll go over that with a finish course of asphalt. But that full-depth repair leaves it reasonably smooth, it's not most attractive, in my opinion. But that is a very effective way to do that, especially, you know, what you're trying to aim at there is an asphalt surface that will, will last by fixing some of the issues underneath of it, but somewhere in between the full, where we would completely rip out the street like Leesburg Avenue, something in between there. The full-depth repair is a program with OPWC, so High Public Works Commission funds and local funds, and then the resurfacing is the city and ODOT. And in particular, we want to stress how helpful, over the past several years, ODOT District 6 has been. They have been actually really incredibly helpful to City of Washington Courthouse, and an organization of which we are incredibly proud. 2027, okay, you have the traffic signals throughout that Court Street corridor, okay? Will be upgraded with improved sensing technology, and examples of where that already has been deployed is Columbus and Glen. You always used to have a problem there, and people complained about it was an issue. That seems to have worked quite well there, and Columbus and Delaware, you remember, was a pain point, a problem that caused a lot of frustration. You put in the new technology, and it completely goes away. So, the concept there is that, you know, that system will work better, you'll increase the flow of traffic in a logical way that, that works for not only the pedestrian community, but the, the driving community. With that, we've also had some preliminary discussions of an engineering company about that five-points intersection, about different ways to make that more pedestrian-friendly, and also not impede any type of traffic issues, and that would have a little bit of a secondary impact on the speed of traffic. Now, there, you know, some people get immediately concerned about flow and backup, but the difference between people traveling at 25 and 35 miles an hour over that stretch is, is not great. In fact, when we look at, we put that mobile speed sign out there before, and you do have some notable offenders, but the vast majority of that traffic is actually a little bit slower than 35 miles per hour. The folks doing the data mining for us, going through all the files, make sure that there's anybody we send, need to send a notice to, in terms of a data breach, they continue to do that work. Currently, they have not provided us with anybody else that we need to notify. If they do, they'll get that notification, they will be offered credit monitoring, and you know, we will talk about it, and if it's a, not a huge number of people, I'll probably, if I can, call them or stop by and see them, make sure that they know that. Scarecrow Festival. Excellent attendance, record sales, and record crowds. Now, the crowd, it's always an estimate, a guesstimate, and I'm going to say, you know, it was very big. And you had a huge number of people up there. It was, it's a very long weekend, it's a very tiring weekend, but it was a tremendous amount of fun. We've had some post-festival reviews, and kind of the, the concepts that we've talked about, what we need to do a little bit differently next year, they're nothing huge, and they're all, all basically stage management issues. In particular, the transition from when you're done on Saturday night to, to be ready for Sunday morning, a little bit of few changes we want to make there, make life a little bit easier, but that, it went exceptionally well. And you have somebody with us tonight that is a huge reason why it went exceptionally well, and that's Kelly Ford. Tremendous dedication, she truly cares about the place, and it's a lot of fun, and we only got mad at each other for a little bit on Sunday. So, we got along pretty well throughout the whole thing. But it's Kelly and, and the Ford family, McKenna Brown, exceptional job, tremendous. Ricky Brown, her husband, my weekend buddy, Ann Quinn, in the land of, you know, you've got a miscellaneous problem, we are there to help figure it out. Shannon Sword, tremendous amount of work. Caleb Ballman, tremendous amount of work. Street Department were exceptional support. Of course, police and fire, they had a presence there that was welcome, that was very positive, that we're very pleased with. A lot of employees of the municipal courts helped, in particular with down on the, the entertainment part of it, down at that end of the festival, and they were incredibly useful. You had several folks that worked for Cregan Lawn Care that were incredibly useful, and I, there's a whole lot of other folks, and, and anybody who volunteered, who worked with us, this year universally, you did a tremendous job, and it's something that I'm incredibly proud of, and, you know, I think it's a very good thing for the community, and it's something we're very happy with. I would like to thank the many generous supporters, Travel and Tourism, Amazon, the Eagles, the Ohio Arts Council, Many Congregations One Church, Fiber Tech, Distran Steel, Parrot Insurance, First State Bank, The Pearl, Browns Boarding, which is dogs and kitties, and I've actually boarded two cats there, and excellent results. Fayette Public Health, Walmart, US Bank, Legal LLC, Pettits, LCNB Bank, Merchants National Bank, TRG Roofing, Brillerton Investments, Adina Health, Allstate Fayette Financial, Blue Hippo, Rent to Own, and my wife, oh, who puts up with a great deal of a lot of time. But this time, you know, when I go home in the evening, Friday and Saturday, and, well, Sunday too, and either I really don't want to walk the stairs upstairs, or sometimes I can't. She very nicely has, you know, changed clothes downstairs. But no, Alicia, she's great help also. Ron mentioned earlier the transparency award from the state of Ohio, the auditor's office, and very proud of that, and very proud of the work we've done there. A lot of people have noticed us installing cameras, those are those cameras we talked about, oh, probably a couple weeks ago now. Those are not speed cameras, is not going to take your picture and send you a ticket, and they're not going to at all. But in particular, well, let's take the five-points intersection, because we, we've talked about that. Oh, say you have a traffic accident there, you know, there will have a record of it, it will make processing the scene very effective, and as that technology develops, it can provide some other uses down the road. That system, though, is actually quite good at, oh, a lot of vehicle recognition, license plate recognition, if there's somebody that, that we're trying to find, face recognition and so forth. I had a meeting with them the other night, and they, and I hadn't thought about it this way before. Now, everybody has an opinion about a hospital, and you can find those variety all over the sun, but that is the largest investment in healthcare in Fayette County that any of us will see in our lifetime, which I'd never thought about it that way before, but, but I mean, that, that's a very apt observation, and that general contractor out there, oh, that's been the easiest general contractor to work with on a project of that scale that we've ever interacted with. I mean, they have been a problem with about the utility connections or traffic management, I mean, it's just been incredibly easy, and just love to see that progress there. Hayes Pizza and the Arcade, the building that, you know, we, we gave them a new business plaque, and then they burnt down that night. They have rebuilt, and the, the pizza part is open, the arcade's got a little bit to go, but it is, is beautiful on the inside, and, you know, I walked in it, and I walked out, and it's still there.
Still there.
But no, it's, it's incredibly nice on the inside, incredibly nice folks, and, you know, we wish them well. McDonald's out by Walmart, you notice that we did some work to the approach, and then you may have noticed that even though it had every cone under the sun and everything to keep you off of it, a semi-truck promptly drove through it.
Of course it did.
Now, that makes it really easy to find the semi-truck, the one that has concrete all over it, so we've been in contact with their, their insurance company, the, the contractor and us, and they will be paying to put that back. Now, the one thing, if you noticed it, after it been driven through, the huge amount of rebar that is in that, and if it, you know, hopefully, give it a little bit of time before somebody tries to do something weird, with that amount of steel in it, it ought to hell hold up pretty decently, but it does take a tremendous amount of beating there. There you had, oh, a prolonged dispute between ODOT and all of the shopping center folks about who was responsible for that, and, you know, we went ahead and fixed it, and then we'll continue the discussion with those two entities about, you know, ultimately, who should really be paying for that. But that, you know, it didn't look, you had that mud hole out there, it looked awful in front of McDonald's, and, you know, there, you, you're talking about a business and family and an individual that has given a tremendous amount to Washington Courthouse, and we were quite happy to go out there and do that. Last two weeks of October. Traffic enforcement and safety. So, don't speed, pay attention to traffic rules, and if you have issues with your vehicle, you need them fixed. In particular, I would be mindful around that five-points intersection, and this is really driven by safety concerns, some resident complaints, but what we want to try to do here is the two weeks before, the first two weeks of October, you'll see police communicate about traffic enforcement and traffic safety a great deal. And, you know, this isn't a one-time thing, you don't have to periodically repeat this, it's just to encourage people to drive the way that we know that we should, quite honestly. In that, you know, we'll go through this exercise, and then we'll do a post-mortem afterwards and talk about how we thought was effective, and if we want to do it differently in the future and so forth. But the first two weeks in October, education promotion, second two weeks is the enforcement aspect of it, which, you know, anytime you get pulled over by a police officer, I mean, there's a reason for that. You know, I've gotten a speeding ticket before, and at some point in the future, I'll probably get another one, and it's because, you know, you're going too fast, or there's issues you need to pay attention to and deal with. And if we didn't, then, then, you know, Caleb's business would, would suffer, and, you know, because you gotta, you know, have some activities there periodically. You got an amended agenda that allows us to proceed with the Fillmore bid for paving streets and alleys, and then the other one is saying that we can apply for OPWC funding, that's that culvert and drainage work that we want to do Dayton Avenue over by Jupiter to look at those situations and provide some relief there, which the work that's been done downstream with the housing development, oh, you can make a huge impact there, tremendous. But that would be primarily, the most expensive part of that is the culvert replacement on Dayton Avenue. Any questions?
I see a lot of questions in the downtown vitality task force update. Do we have answers to those? Is that, I guess, well, I can go down the list.
Well, I think that we have a meeting coming up here in October, where I thought that we were going to talk about this.
Okay, so that's how you address?
Yeah, and we've got a lot of, you've had a lot of activity with CIC in the downtown, you've had a lot of renovation activity there that, that we're very proud of, and we've been there, we facilitate it, and we also have, working on a solution, you have a downtown business building owner that has a very substantial challenge with some infrastructure of the building, that we're going to have to work to come up with a creative solution, and that's something that city building owner and everybody involved, we're going to have to noodle that around and come up with a way to address that. But it's a particularly large, north of $100,000 problem.
Are there any questions that you haven't got, any answers to?
No, we do have a meeting in October, we'll go over those, and then I'll submit to council the results and the answers that we had.
Great, I look forward to that. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sokma, you're up.
Just a quick, did this here real quick, this time of the year, it's hard to believe we're already into the third quarter for us, we're going to be closing out, so getting ready for that last run, but overall, our finances are stable, we're in good shape. We've got about 99% of our gap audit stuff in, so that should be done, and then the state will be coming in in September, or rather, sometime in October. They have about three days left. They did start the audit before that happened, but he's also given me a share file so we can load some other stuff up to help speed the process up, but we should have that turned in before the 31st of October, and we'll be back with that, and then ironically, two months later, we started back up again. Anyway, it, it's going good, I don't foresee any problems, I mean, they've been great to work with, and like I said, so I think we're going to be fine again, but overall, as I said, for the end of the third quarter coming up, we're setting pretty good, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Any questions? We already had a report earlier. Very good. Mr. Pitchstick?
Mine, of course, is very short here with grass. I don't want anybody to forget about mowing their grass over the next few days. We had a little bit of rain, I came up Temple Street a little bit ago, and there were several yards that were above the eight inches, and so people need to take and realize that they need to continue to mow even though it's fall. In addition, I don't understand why people continue to throw tires in their backyard, or garbage, or trash, or lawn clippings, I don't understand that. When I went by several houses today myself, and there were tires, old automobile carts, old pallets, there were trailers parked in their yards with now big mud holes, so I don't, I, I'm at a loss to understand why that they want to do that to their properties. So, we're going to continue to enforce those rules and, and take it to court, so I just wanted to bring everybody up to speak.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Pitchstick? Okay, local residents, we have one wishing to speak. Mrs. Blair, you're up. You know the routine, I think.
I think I do. Christine Blair, 1118 Gulfview Drive, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. And I don't really have questions, I just have a comment that I need to make. Not sure how to begin exactly, but, and I, first of all, want to say that this is not based on anything I have seen on Facebook, it is based on things that I have heard personally or have been told by people who were there that I trust, okay? We have to remember, this is a small town, and like my girls, when they were in high school, they'd come home and say, "How'd you know I wasn't where I was supposed to be?" And I'd say, "Remember, this is a small town. We know each other, we care for each other, and we tell each other things, and that's how we help each other out." So, this has been bothering me for a few years, and I finally got today to where it got a little, well, not today, but in the last, since the last meeting, where it got more personal, and I felt I had to say something. There have been comments made by councilmen and about other councilmen and candidates, and it isn't just this year with us, it's been going on for years, and, but today, it got personal because, I'm sorry, Jim, but his name was mentioned too, in a very vulgar way, in a public place, and so, of course, it got back to me, and that hurts. I think you are on the council because you were elected, all of you, not just three or four of you, you were elected, and you were elected to serve the people, and I don't think there's any need for name-calling or putting people down, and I wished it had never happened. I can recall sometimes in council meetings when citizens and taxpayers, and please remember, this is not just this year, this has been going on for years, that I've come to meetings, and they were criticized and ridiculed for their views, for their questions, perhaps not by name, but by reference, everybody in the room knew who they were referring to, and I don't think that should have been done. I don't think any council member should ever put down another council member, but I've said that before. And some of the worst comments that I have experienced and heard in here during meetings is in the miscellaneous, because that's the time when you all have a chance to say things, some are positive, some are extremely negative, some of them are set out of frustration, but the people sitting here or listening when, when it was able to be heard, don't have a chance to respond. And I remember one evening, I just wanted to storm out of here so badly, because I felt so bad for someone who had just been put down, well, two people, and they sat there and had to be very quiet, and I don't think that's what the miscellaneous time is supposed to be for. I don't want to mention people by name, and I won't publicly, if anybody wants to ask me about my comments when we're all together, and it's not being republic, uh... and it's not being republic, uh, recorded or in public, I'd be more than glad to do so. But I think, if you think real hard, people will know who I am referring to. I just want you to remember that you were voted to serve the people. Rather, they are in the county or the city, if they're paying city taxes, their thoughts are still to be considered because you're spending their money. Anyway, I just hope that after hearing this comment, and I know I'm nervous and I'm upset, but I just want everybody to live respectfully. You were voted, you're city leaders, and I ask you to please lead with dignity and with integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any others, so we will move along. First is legislation previously introduced. And we're at, I should say, there's none, so we're at new legislation. Resolution number R thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move, we put resolution R thirty-seven, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second half?
Discussion?
Blair?
Yes.
Call, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Rick Garrison to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with the term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Next is resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Blair?
Yes.
Call, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City Manager and/or the City Service Director of the City of Washington Courthouse to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's State Capitol Improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required to Dayton Avenue culvert pipe, small structure replacement, tile and grading improvements.
Next is resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R thirty-nine, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call.
Blair?
Yes.
Call, yes. Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City Manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington Courthouse to award a contract to Fillmore Construction for the two thousand and twenty-five street and alley resurfacing program.
Thank you, Kelly. Next is miscellaneous. Moving along here. Mr. Chrisman, what do you have this evening?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. We don't have a full house like we did a couple meetings, you know, but it's nice to see you here. Appreciate you coming, come back and see us again. Thank you.
Mr. Hawk?
I don't have anything worthwhile to say.
You're welcome. Mrs. Cole?
I do have a couple of things. I wanted to extend a thank you to Carriage Court, Assisted Living and Memory Support. I got a phone call yesterday from Kathy who works there and she said that she has a check for me. They did a fundraiser for the playground. So I'm going tomorrow to meet with her and Dale will send you the picture. But just very appreciative of their support. And then the Rotary Club of Washington Courthouse is also doing their Christmas tree drive where we decorate them on the courthouse lawn. And that money goes to, to that inclusive playground account as well. So that's exciting. And then in personal fun news, I just want to celebrate my little guy. He's pretty cool. You may know or you may not know, my son is on the autism spectrum and was diagnosed at two. And then he wasn't doing a lot of talking and was doing a lot of spinning and flapping and all kinds of fun things like that. And we've navigated all of the roller coasters of, of raising an Arthur and we've learned far more from Arthur than he ever will from us. But he, he decided this year, he read, he reads everything. He reads incessantly. His reading level is higher than mine. I think he's just so impressive and infuriating. But he reads everything and this year, the topic was football. And normally, he reads about intangible things that he can't actually do. So like, one year it was tornadoes and one year it was sharks and one year it was, every year it's different. Presidents was one year and he can list them from Washington all the way through. But this year it was football and I took it with a grain of salt and was like, that's great, sports ball, yeah. Because we're not really sporting people, we're hobbits. But he was determined and he read everything and did, like, interviewed Glenn Cobb, who did so. He just did all of the things as Arthur does. So he played and we fully anticipated that it would be atrocious because basketball was atrocious. But something clicked and all of the books and all of the playthings that he read and all of the stuff that he knows, it worked and it clicked and he's done really well. And he got Player of the Week on the day that there was a White House announcement on autism. And I won't go into politics because, but we have our own hobbit views of the announcement that was made. And it wasn't particularly definitive of what Arthur and his experience is like. And I'm just really super proud of him. So I just wanted to share my little, like, yeah, good job, go autism, go football, go little Arthur. Pretty cool.
Rag on your kids. Oh, let's coach Williamson if he needs help coaching this year. Sounds like Arthur knows.
He's got it, he's got it.
If he goes to Greenfield, he might need help. Mr. Schultz?
Well, you know what? You look around the city and you try to find the positives. A lot of people want to kind of hone in on the negatives, but the positives are a little bit harder to find. Negatives are easy to find, but positives are a little bit more, you have to search a little bit for them. And I'm telling you right now, we've got a great positive right here. This is the highest achievement of open transparency for our government. Good job on your staff, that's a fantastic thing to do. The Scarecrow Festival, very positive thing. We have the, a lot of buildings in the downtown being renovated right now, extremely positive thing. The city's looking good, the city's moving forward. It's something, it's a city you can be proud to live in today. We have industry coming, we have new job opportunities coming. There's a life here, new housing coming. There's things here in Washington Courthouse that you don't find in the communities around us. Our, our, our rate of crime is the lowest of the cities around us right now. So it is fantastic. So when you go to looking and you talk about negatives, negatives are easy to find. You can do those all day long. Positives, you have to go out of your way and find them. And when you do find them, you become a positive person. So the more positive you think and the more positives you look for, the better person you're going to become. So that's how I look at things. And so that's how I always continue to look at things. So it was, that is what we need to be looking at here in Washington Courthouse is, what can we look and find the positives in? And there's a lot of them, believe me. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Mr. Blair? Yes, I want to thank my wife for her exercise of her First Amendment rights. So believe it or not, I was not privy to what she was going to say tonight. But that's the way marriages should be. Everybody has their own opinions and I respect her very highly and I have to because she's going to be driving me for four years. But thanks to everybody that came in tonight. And I have one thing here that was given to me that might be interesting. And everybody knows my passion for the Fayette County Dog Shelter. And there's going to be a fundraiser for the Fayette County Dog Shelter on Saturday, October the eleventh, from eleven to two at the facility. The volunteers will be walking dogs and there will be some fun things to do. So I would encourage anyone to go out there and see that and participate and donate to a good cause. That's all I have, Mr. Blair. Thank you, Mr. Blair. Mr. Johnson?
Prelimarily, I just got done talking with Mark earlier. He's got the electronic versions of the jet agreements. I know some people really want to see a jet agreement, so he's going to give those to me in an electronic format. That way I can easily distribute it to people who want those. So progress. Should be available in the next two days, definitely within the next forty-eight hours.
Yes, sir.
Good. Well, we've got another exciting downtown event coming up. I've been assured, though, that the Practical Magic will not feature topless witches this year. For better or for worse. I hope to bring some levity ending on that, but I also want to point out, Chris, thank you for coming up and talking. I was just reading James today and talking about how our tongues are such small things, but like rudders on a ship, they steer so much and they're very important. And I'm not perfect in any means. I hope that if anyone out there ever thinks that I have done something wrong, that you at least know that I welcome criticism, I do. I, I love dialogue, I love dialogue. If people come up here and they talk, I think I've asked the most follow-up questions of anyone up here. And that's something I'm proud of is because I love that dialogue. So thank you, Chris, for coming and saying something. I don't know who or what. It was public and vulgar, but never reached my ears. So, yeah, it's a good reminder, though. We all must keep in mind that our words have the ability to, to build people up and to tear people down. And, you know, the old saying, sticks and stones may hurt my, may break my bones, but words will never hurt me, only gets you so far. Yeah, so thank you. I was just reading James, I wanted in on that, so it was very timely. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch? Yes, sir. We're a little bit worried if, you know, that the change in the Practical Magic thing will decrease the crowd, but that's...
Well, you know. Tourism's crazy.
Yeah.
Uh, no, go ahead and announce it, you got it right there. I think everybody got a copy of this. And the WCH City Council Candidate Meeting at the Commission on Aging, eleven seventy-nine South Elm Street, September the thirtieth, from six to eight o'clock. Mr. Lynch, Mr. Schultz, Mr. Osborne, Mr. Hawk and Mr. Johnson will be there. And it says, get informed at our candidate's forum. So I would encourage all of our citizens here in this great city of Washington Courthouse to come out and hear your candidates and then go to the polls on November the fourth or some people like to vote early, which we usually do. But exercise your, your right to vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, for my comments, I know that two days ago was Mr. Joseph Denon's birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Denon. You know, anybody who's ever been in a leadership role, I don't care whether it's school, politics, business, if you've been in a leadership role, you're going to have the opportunity to come under attack by people because you have to make decisions. And when you make a decision, just like an umpire, some people may like your decision and some people may not. But I believe that Mr. Denon has and always has had the best for this city in mind. But again, that doesn't mean that everybody else will agree with him. But Mr. Denon, I appreciate what you do for the city. And I wanted to say that since you just had a birthday.
Thank you.
It's that time of year, council members, if you haven't picked it up already, there are evaluations in your mailbox for the three people that we evaluate. And as I said earlier to Chelsea, we don't get to evaluate the department heads, it's not our job. We don't get to evaluate Kelly Ford, it's not our job. But I really appreciate, from my standpoint, what the department heads do, what Kelly does, what Tina does, what all the other gals and guys do in our service department and so on, to keep the city moving. Kelly or Joe, how many electrical outlets does it take to put up with all those places that were lined up down here?
Oh, we put out a number of those temporary boxes and we made it a lot easier over the years because we've invested, oh, a fair amount of money in that electrical system down there so you can support those food trucks. Couldn't find the word. And we made it a whole lot, lot easier. And quite honestly, a whole lot safer too. Because way back when, the way that was done was, was, let's call it interesting.
How many?
Fox and away, forty-five.
Forty-five.
That's some, thirty, fifty, one twenty, fourteen, I know more than I need to know about that. Yeah. And fans go, fans go extinct.
Anyway, like I said, we don't evaluate people other than Mr. Denon, Mr. Pitstick and Mr. Sokman. But my evaluation of our staff and our department heads and so on is excellent. Does that mean that everybody's always happy and everybody does everything exactly? No, it doesn't, but in general, things get done. The last thing I want to say comes from a comment that Mr. Blair made last week and Mr. Johnson kind of talked about it a little bit too. I saw this quote, "Love is not a finite emotion. We don't have only so much to share. Our hearts create love as we need it." And to go along with what Jim said at the last meeting, I don't think there's ever been, well, in quite a bit of few years, I don't think there's ever been a time where our country doesn't need to share love more. And the thing that I see that creates danger is the fact that, I don't care whether it's right wing, left wing, no wing, people are shooting people on both sides. And it's a person doing an act. The guy that shot Charlie Kirk was one person. But when people talk about it, they talk about they. It's a person. But when you expand it to they, now you got everybody mad at everybody. And again, you can talk about our country needs to have more love. It's not a finite emotion. And as long as we keep talking about they did something, it's going to be hard to ever stop what's going on. And so Mr. Blair was talking last meeting and it reminded me, we need to look at ourselves. I don't, there's not one religion that I know of, now there's extremes on religions, but there's not one religion I know of that doesn't talk about love and helping other people and caring for them. Loving your enemies. And so that's what I was reminded of as I watched that funeral for Charlie Kirk. As I think about the other people, including... I think about the other people, including shootings today at ice places, a place. Man, 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 man. Love is not a finite emotion. We need more in our country. Having said that, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Roll call.
Blair?
Yes.
Call, yes. Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned according to that clock at eight twenty-one.